Good evening. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent Wilson Central School District, and this is the Wilson Board Meeting dated November 24th, Tuesday, November 24th. It is 7:08. We had some technical difficulties in regards to the computer we use for these meetings to connect to the Internet. So as of right now, we are recording this meeting using Google Meet, and then it will be placed on the district's web page for everybody to see. Again, this is the Tuesday, November 24th, regular board meeting. It is 7:08. And if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, you can call 751-9399, or you can email myself or Mrs. Levon, the district clerk, at our email addresses, which are on the website. We'll be glad to get any information to you that you need, or if you have something you want the board to know, we can forward it to the board. At this time, I'll turn the board meeting over to President Waters.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Please stand and join me in the flag of allegiance.
Our flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item B, board members approve meeting minutes from November 10, 2020. Can I have a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 2A, we have a discussion on substitute nurse. Read it, Superintendent Carter.
Thank you, President Waters. So going through these last few months, we quickly realized the importance that we need to have a whole new list of sub-nurses as part of our repertoire, not only when our nurses get sick, but also when we need them for other reasons, testing and things like that. So we recently found ourselves pretty short on nurses, and we had to do some recruiting really quickly. Through that recruiting process, it was quickly learned that we really haven't increased our sub-pay rate for nurses in a really long time. And I'm almost embarrassed to say how low it really is. Couple years ago, we increased our teacher's sub-rate pay to be quite competitive in Orleans-Niger County, but our nursing pay rate is not. It is currently at $15 an hour. I actually thought it was at 17, but it's at $15 an hour. I did a comparison with Mrs. Oliveri with the sub-pay rates across Orleans-Niger County. So they, our Labor Management Service from Orleans-Niger County, BOCES, does a comparison of just a number of different things. But this is the comparison of nurses' sub-pay. And we are far below any other district by three hours an hour. The closest one to us is at 1875. So when I take a look at the, you know, if I take Wilson out of the mix and I look at everybody else's, I'm thinking that a good next step would be to, I would recommend that we raise our sub-pay rate to $20 an hour, which isn't the highest in Orleans-Niger, but certainly not the lowest. We would fall pretty much in the middle for our sub-pay rate and bring us within lines to what, you know, what other districts are paying their substitute teachers. Is there any comments on that?
I have a comment. I'm wondering, comparing to the other school districts, how far people will have to travel. Because I know that we've had some issues in the past with people traveling to come to Wilson. Twenty sounded very good to me. That was the figure in my head. But I'm wondering, when you said it's in the middle, maybe we should think about going a little bit higher.
Or local, are locals with anything on how they pay?
That's actually why I sort of, there's two questions there. So let me start with the distance traveled. I believe all of our current subs, even the ones that we hustled in the last few weeks, are current local subs. I don't know of anybody that travels outside of Wilson. I can take a look at the list between now and when we bring this to the board for approval. On either side of us, which is the other question that was asked, just to tell you, I don't want to give you the wrong figure. So besides Wilson, Newport was the next lowest at $16.17. And on the other side, which was Newfing, they're at $22, $23 for an hour, excuse me. So three or four districts are at 1825. Newfing is the highest at 23. There, I'm staring at one, there's one at 2163 in North Tonawanda. But I'm looking at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. And if we go to $20 an hour, we'd be the ninth district within that, you know, $19 to $20 an hour range. So I think that's a fair compromise, and it's a good number to be at. I can look into the travel, but I'm kind of rolling my head who uses nurses, and they're pretty much people that live in and around Wilson. We don't draw people from out there. And there it is like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the nurses' sub-pay rate or concerns?
Are there any additional rates that they have for fees that they have to pay when they come onboard?
Yes. So like the teacher subs and all employees in the district, in order to be an employee of a school district, you have to get fingerprinted. Last I remember, it was $100. I don't think it's gone up from then. You know, we've refrained from paying that fee because we hire numerous teachers a year. If we pay for one person, we have to have that consideration for all district members. So we have not, we have not covered that fee for any, that I know of. I asked that same question, and I was told we have not paid that fee for anybody. So there's a lot of sub, teacher subs, nurse subs, that are on that list. They have their own RN license, so they've already taken care of those licensing fees. Some of them have had them for years. Other than the fingerprinting, I don't believe there's another fee to them. And of the two people we brought on this week, both were already fingerprinted, so there was no extra cost to that person. We did try bringing somebody in for a one day, and they fingerprinted, and they weren't going to be fingerprinted because they were just coming in to help out that day. So we had to look in a different direction. So we were, in the current situation we were dealing with, I think we were bouncing around four different subs. We ended up having to use a different person because one of those four subs wasn't fingerprinted and really didn't want, wasn't planning on being a long-term sub for us. The other three, one was already a long-term sub, and the other two have since signed on as a long-term sub, including the person that's on the agenda tonight. I hope I answered your question?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or concerns about sub-pay rate for nurses?
Are all our nurses RNs?
Currently, yes.
So there's, like you mentioned, the one school, the RNs were paid more versus maybe an LPM?
Yeah, we haven't really gone down the LPM road in a while. Bring them, it's my understanding, and I haven't personally looked into it, so it's just what I've heard from other superintendents and nurses in order to have an LPM in the district, you have to have a nurse as a supervisor. And that's, can be a bit of a, we don't have a district-wide nurse supervisor. So the LPM has, it's like a nurse practitioner has to work under the license of a doctor. So an LPM has to work under the license of a nurse. And when you're doing that, if you're doing that on a sub-to-sub basis, I'm not sure our nurses would be willing to do that. So we haven't gone down that route, and I would suggest that we don't put LPM subs in.
Thank you.
Any other concerns, questions? So if the board must say, there's something I hear between now and our next board meeting, our December board meeting, I will make the recommendation to approve an increase in the sub-pay for our nurses to $20 per hour.
Item B, please.
Thank you, President Waters. I have a COVID-19 update for the board, for the community. And I'll take any questions that board members may have after that. I have a prepared sort of outline, but I can stop at any point. And again, if anybody in the community has questions, please don't hesitate. And I think that's one of the things we've been trying to do quite readily is please call, email us, we'll answer your question. If you can't call, email. You're getting numerous updates by letter. If you don't understand what they mean, just reply back to it. It'll come right to me, or it'll come to a district administrative employee. We'll get you the answer. So if you give them one of those all-call emails or those all-group emails or texts, if you reply back, it actually goes to a person, and we'll be glad to get you your answer. Happens almost every time we send something out, I get a reply back from one of those with a question, a comment, or just thanks for the information. So board members, community members, here's my update as of today, Tuesday, November 24th, and that's my update as of 7:16. And I keep doing that because it does change by every hour. And that's how much difference it's been. The update I've been giving you now would have been different last Friday because this information has all changed. So as of today, Tuesday, November 24th, and this was at 9:30 this morning when I looked at the Niagara County Department of Health positive COVID map. They have two maps going right now. They're currently reporting just over 3,300 positive COVID cases in Niagara County. They have 39, and that's since March, since this began. And there's 39 in the town of Wilson and 90 in the village of Wilson. So that's the current numbers to date. Now, they also have a second map that shows the active COVID cases recently, I would say over the last seven to 10 days. So currently, the Niagara County Department of Health is reporting 652 active COVID cases. Of those 652, we have five in the town and village of Wilson. There's four in the town and one in the village of Wilson. As you know, we had three within our school community, two students and one staff member over the last four weeks. Luckily, in the last week and a half, we've been in good shape. So we continue to be on the lower end of the positive cases. I keep saying we're in a little bit of a bubble, but I'm afraid that every time I say that, that bubble bursts, and we're going to get an increase. But as of right now, we seem to be running on the lower side. Currently, North Tonawanda has 76 cases, and parts of Niagara Wheatfield, which has 83 positive cases, are in the yellow zone. So back about two, three weeks ago, the governor decided his new approach to COVID-19 was to create three zones, each one with more restrictions. It begins with the yellow zone, and it goes to an orange zone, and then it goes to a red zone. And each one of those zones has further restrictions for businesses, for houses of worship, and for schools. If Wilson schools end up in a yellow zone, and I can't tell you when that's going to happen or if that's going to happen, I'm hoping that it don't. But if it does end up in the yellow zone, we're, I want to make sure that the board knows and the community knows that we have done preparations to stay open by becoming a testing site. So what does that mean? To stay open, we would have to test 20% of our students and staff over the first two weeks of being in the yellow zone. If our positivity rate over that two-week period is less than the positivity rate of Niagara County, which is currently 4.2-ish, seven-day rolling average, we can stay open. If our positivity rate is higher than the county rate, then we have to continue to test every two weeks until one of two things happen. We go below the rate of Niagara County, or we become red. If we, excuse me, or we become orange, I skipped the zone. If we become orange, we automatically have to close for four days, at least four days. Within the agenda of this board meeting, there are two agreements. One is for Workfit Medical and our medical director, who's Dr. Ellie, to become a lab director of a limited service laboratory here in Wilson. It'll be housed right out of the high school, middle school. From that agreement, the Wilson CSD this week applied for a laboratory license and is waiting for approval. The cost of that license was $200. The average time for approval is five to seven days. Most districts are getting it back in five to seven days. The check was cut yesterday, and it was mailed today. So if we are in the yellow zone, our plan is to go remote for three days. On day one, we would test 20% of our staff so they could be in school, working remotely, and stay in school. If our, and on day two and three, we would test 20% of our students. And if our results from these three days show our positivity rate is below the county rate, then we would be able to stay open and reopen on day four. The reason we need to go remote is, one of the things I'm trying to do is to do this reopening with as little cost, additional cost as possible. So there are other school districts that are reopening, and kids are still in the building. I have a bit of a problem with that because if somebody is positive, now we've got kids in the building. I also have a problem with that because in order to keep kids in the building, our current nursing staff needs to be working with their kids. I can't hold, I can't have them working with kids and testing 20%. So the only way to do that is to bring in additional nursing staff. That could be our subs, if they're available, at the new sub-rate. Or as part of a third agreement, we could use additional staff from Workfit, which is expensive for a day rate. An hour late for a nurse from a company or from a service is far more than a sub-pay. So I just don't think it's cost-effective to keep the building running while we're doing this testing. And the hopes is we can stay open and, or excuse me, reopen on day four. My hopes, we never have to use this, but it's what our plan is for right now. Again, the reason to go to remote is that we need all of our nurses and much of our clerical staff to not only manage the testing, but the record-keeping that goes beyond the testing. There's two things, there's three things you have to do. They have to register for the testing. They have to do a consent, a parent or staff has to consent to testing. Then the test has to be done, and then it has to be logged into a system. So I need a clerical staff on either end of this process with a nurse at the beginning taking temperatures, and at the end, our middle, doing the testing. So you can see the process is very involved, very similar. The staff probably recognizes it very similar to what we did with the Department of Health. It's here, we would do the exact similar process for those two days. The only difference is there'd be signup sheet online for staff and then signup sheet online for parents to fill out for students. It's all voluntary. I have to come up with 20%. The community's going to tell me right away if they want me to be open. If we come up with 20%, and 20% of the kids fill out, our parents fill out the form to be tested, and our positivity rate is below Niagara County, we'll be back open on the fourth day. If I don't get 20% of the students and staff, we'll remain remote until we're no longer in the yellow zone. You know, the second agreement is for nursing backup. And I'm really looking at that as if we go to an orange zone. If we go to the orange zone, what that means is that we have to close for four days, and anyone who's returning back to the building has to test negative. I would have to test every student and every staff that wanted to return. I cannot do that with the current nursing staff. I don't even know if it's possible. Going orange may mean we're remote for good. I just don't, I can't tell you that right now because I've been putting all of our efforts into, what does yellow zone mean? Today, we met about, you know, how can we, you know, use technology to try and put this paperwork in place in as easy possible way as possible? You know, get invites to parents, see if they're willing to have their kids tested, all sorts of things like that. Again, all of the testing is voluntary, and there would be a consent for the student to get tested. As part of this process, I would send out a video to the parent and the staff showing what the test looks like. It is nothing like you've seen at the county. It's got the nasopharyngeal, which is a long stick that touches the back of your head through your nose. It's a very gentle swab. It's a binex card, so it's a gentle swab in both nostrils. The swab goes on a card, there's a solution that goes on it. And then you hold the card for 15 minutes, and then the test is opened up, and then there's color change if you're positive or negative. It is only for asymptomatic students and staff. Anybody with symptoms will be sent to the doctor. But if you do not have any symptoms, it's a way of testing large groups of people. So that's the update I have right now. My hope is by December, this time next week, we'll be up and running as a lab. And if we become a yellow zone, I can continue with our goal, which is to stay open as long as possible. And there was a, there was a letter that was sent out today, and I'm only saying this because I think it's important. There's a letter sent out today by the Erie Niagara County Superintendents Association. Probably seen their president on TV, Mr. Cornell. He's a superintendent from Hamburg. So anytime you see the superintendent from Hamburg, you know that when he's talking, he's talking for all of the Erie Niagara, Erie and Niagara County superintendents, which we are a part of that organization. We sent a letter out, put it in news and notes, pushing back at the governor and his orange and red zone designations. And basically indicated what we just talked about, which is the cost of doing testing and is putting not only school districts at risk, but it's turning us into the health department. So his remarks were spot-on. While we didn't want to test during the yellow zone, almost every school district in Erie Niagara County has figured it out. But when you go to an orange zone and you have to test, in some, in our case, over 1,200 students and staff, and in many other districts, thousands and thousands, it puts an undue burden, not only financial burden on the district, but more importantly, there's many students that are not going to want to do it, many parents are not going to want to do it, so therefore, they wouldn't be able to come back to school. And he came up with, it's the first time I've seen where there's some alternatives to what the orange and red zone testing are. My hope is the governor takes it serious and makes some changes to that policy because the 100% testing right now in orange and red will close almost every school district, if not every school district in the orange areas. And how we're going to be affected is our teachers live in areas that are going to be closing because of orange, and they're going to have difficulty finding daycare to come to school. So that's the bigger picture of what we're looking at. So that's my COVID update. There's some positive news, and again, you know, like I said, we're still within that, that, you know, good spot where Wilson is staying on the low side of positivity rates. We're surrounded by two districts that are increasing in numbers. But my hope is we stay on that lower end and we never have to worry about the yellow zone. But that's my report. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, I'll be glad to answer.
There's going to be flash. Niagara County just said two more for the cases.
Yep. It will continue.
I was wondering, does the district, is the district responsible for the cost of the testing?
Indirectly, yes. Directly, no. So there's two parts to the testing. They're going to give us the kit, but we have to pay for the person to do the testing. And we have to pay for the license. So, you know, it's, without getting on my political stump here, it's, I'll hold my hand out, here's my task. But on the other hand, I'm reaching in your pocket and taking money from you because it's going to cost us money. And the orange and red zone designation is going to cost a significant amount of money to test 1,200 people. We would have to stay shut for a long period of time. If I used my current staff, we would be shut for four weeks while we're trying to test the entire district. You only can do somebody an hour, and you only can do somebody a day. We averaged about 90 a day, so if it's 100, if it's 1,200 people, that's at least 12 days to get through the entire school district. In the meantime, the kids are at home. It just doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Board members, any other comments or questions? Superintendent Carter, I'd certainly like to thank you for your leadership in this. From the very beginning, you've been on the forefront of regulations and working out solutions in order to keep the district and its residents safe and instructed, which is what we're here to do. Hearing nothing under 4A approved superintendents, I'm sorry, three personnel appointments. A approved non-instructional substitute employee, Kelly Robinson, RN substitute school nurse. Just going to have a motion.
Sure.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under 4A, approved superintendent staffing agreement between the Wilson Central School District and Workfit Medical LLC to provide supplemental staffing services to the district effective November 19, 2020 through June 30, 2021 for the customary fee. Can I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, approve the collaborative agreement for limited lab license and SARS-CoV-2 testing between the Wilson Central School District and Workfit Medical to provide rules, regulations, and practice agreements to become a limited service laboratory according to the New York State Clinical Laboratory Evaluation Program from November 18, 2020 through June 30, 2020. Can I have a motion? Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, approve Wilson Central School District goals for the 2020-2021 school year. Can I have a motion? Second. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Item D, approve the disposal of excess coal ball nets from Wilson High School through Sallie to Hamburg Central School District at a cost of $5,000. Can I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under five, we have some policy updates. Superintendent Carter.
Thank you. This is our policy review and audit for the 2020-21 school year. The first policy is Policy 5670, and it's on the front screen for the board members to see, and it was also the board members' packet to review. This is that one mentioned, I put it in news and notes also, that the district needed to review and approve a records management policy change. And you can see in blue in the middle what the change is, which is the district will retain records and dispose of them in accordance with in accordance with the retain and disposition schedule for the New York State Labor Relations on New York State Local Government Records, LGS one. Or as otherwise approved by the Commissioner of Education. Further, if any laws specifically provides a retention period longer than established by the schedule, the retention period will be established by law, the government. Basically that means is, New York State and state ed used to use one record retention schedule. Now they've gone to a new one and put in that language that sometimes in law it changes where you have to keep a certain record for a longer period of time. So that's the purpose of this and why we have it before us. If there are no questions, I'll move into our December board meeting for approval. Policy fifty six eighty one. Policy fifty six eighty one is school safety plans. As board members, we already know, we, we approve our school safety plans at the beginning of the school year. Um, usually prior to the school year, it, and then it's on a thirty day public viewing. Um, then from there, it goes to uh, our website and it's our plan that's loaded into New York State. Well, there's always been a need to have a committee, we have a safety committee that reviews it. We have parents that review it on the website and it's given to staff and it's um, instruction given to staff. But there never have been a regulation to make sure that bus drivers and monitors receive our copy or at least our, talk to about our safety plan. We meet with our bus drivers and our monitors from Ridge Road at the beginning of our school year. We give them the appropriate training, but um, we, we, we have talked about the school safety plan. This new policy mandates that we not only talk to the school personnel, but we actually give them a copy of our school safety plan. So you'll see throughout fifty six PD one, a foreplaged plan. In about four or five locations, it says include bus drivers and monitors in this conversation. Any questions about that? Policy fifty seven fifty one, drug and alcohol testing for schools, bus driver. You'll see on page four is the only change, that language in yellow. Fifty seven fifty one, there it is, on page four of five. Okay, there it is. That change in yellow is an addition. So they've created at the state level um, a drug and alcohol clearinghouse, which is a secure online database that provides real time information about CDL and commercial drivers, license holders and alcohol program violations. Um, it says the district will comply with all federal laws, regulations regarding this clearinghouse in accordance with forty nine CFR part two, three eighty two. The following personal information will be collected, maintained and reported to the clearinghouse. A verified positive unadulterated and substituted drug test result. An alcohol confirmation test with a concentration of point oh four higher, refusal to submit to any required test. Employer report of actual knowledge of any on duty alcohol use, pre duty alcohol use, alcohol use following an incident and drug use. An SAP report and successful completion of a return to duty process. A negative return to duty test and an employer's report of completion and follow up test. Once this board approves this policy, this policy will be given to our, our Ridge Road STA supervisors to make sure that that policy change, not only they know about it, but they have knowledge of this clearinghouse. Any questions about that? Policy sixty one twenty one, sexual harassment in the workplace. They struck out on the first page, page one of nine. The district will post this policy prominently throughout the district to extend practicable. We actually do an instruction at the beginning of every year and, and this policy is available um, in print and electronic form. On the second page, two of nine, it says, under New York State Human Rights Law, sexual harassment and unlawful is unlawful when in subject of an individual in inferior terms, conditions, privileges of employment. Harassment needs to be served severe and pervasive to the unlawful and currently harassing conduct that constitutes one more than petty slights or trivial inconveniences. That was added to the policy. And this policy sets forth an investigation process, annual training for all staff. On page seven and nine, um, a notice section was added. The district will provide notice to all employees in writing. The district will post the policy prominently throughout the district to extend practicable. And at the time of hiring, in every annual, and it, and in, and in every annual sexual harassment prevention training program, the district will provide each employee a notice containing this policy and the information presented at the district sexual harassment prevention training. The notice will be provided in English and in the language identified by the employee as it is her primary language. And provided that the New York State Department of Labor Commissioner has published a template and a model of materials in that language. The notice will be delivered in writing, either print or digitally. That's a change, um, so we're allowed to send it digitally or have it for their possession in a digital manner. The notice will either link to or include an attachment or copy of the policy and training material. And all of that is in our human resource portal. Um, and on page eight of nine, there's a change. The complaints for the DHR will be filed in a timely, one year, three year, three years beginning August twentieth of the harassment. So it's within one year, three years beginning with the uh, August uh, twelfth twenty twenty. So after uh, August twelfth, it's within three years of the harassment that it may be filed, filed. And that's all of the changes to that policy sixty one twenty one. Any questions? Policy sixty two thirteen is probation and tenure. There's a number of changes to this. Some of it's just language cleanup, but generally teachers, all other members of the teaching staff, principals, administrators, supervisors and all other members of the supervisory staff will be appointed by the board upon the recommendation of the superintendent for probationary uh, period of four years. And that was a change by law. Um, and that was brought about by a change to education law thirty twenty A and thirty twenty B. The other change in the middle, in yellow, it says the probationary period will not be, will not exceed three years when the principal, administrator, supervisor or member of supervising staff appointed after June first twenty twenty, who is previously appointed to tenure as an administrator within the authorized administrative tenure in any district or boces within the state. So if you're an administrator and you've been tenured in another district and you leave and become some uh, upper, it has to be in the same uh, tenure category. So assistant principal will becoming principals does not count, that's still a four year. If you're a principal in one district and you move to be a principal in another district in your new district, you only need to be three years, which is the same for teachers. Um, some language cleanup at the bottom of this uh, page, on the second page, again, some language cleanup to make it a little easier. Get rid of some, you know, language, add some language in to make it a little easier to read. And down at the bottom of page two of three, um, it says the expiration date of the appointment. If made on a probationary basis for employees or classroom teacher building principal, the resolution must state that to receive tenure, the individual must receive composite score of overall EPPR rating of effective hire in these three or four preceding years. And the teacher or building principal receiving ineffective composite score or overall EPPR rating on her final year will not be eligible for tenure at that time, which is on every one of our appointments for tenure here. So I think the biggest change for this is just identifying the fact that teachers and administrators that are previously tenured, moved districts, only need a three year tenure period. Any questions about that? Page, policy sixty five fifty is leave of absences. The only change I see of substance is on page three, which is a district will not uh, retaliate against an employee requesting or obtaining leave of absence under this section, um, which is under bone marrow donation. Additional leaves for the purposes of bone marrow donation under other provisions of law will not be prevented. You'll see on page four of five, for leaves of absences, the district will grant an unpaid leave of absence to an employee who is a victim of a witness of a criminal offense. Is required or choose to appear as a witness, consult with the district attorney or to exercise his or her rights to provide in the criminal procedure law or family court law. Letter G is an addition, victims of domestic violence, unless the absence would cause an undue hardship to the district. The district will provide reasonable accommodations to employees who are victims of domestic violence, who must be absent from work for a reasonable time in accordance with law. And the employee availing themselves, the lead must provide the district with a reasonable advance notice, unless providing this notice is not feasible. Any employee unable to provide reasonable advance notice must, within a reasonable time after the absence, provide a certification to the district when required. To the extent allowed by law, the district will maintain the confidentiality of the information related to the employee's status as a victim of domestic violence. That was added. The last page, five of five, um, I'm not going to read through all this, but a couple of years ago, there was a change to the voter leave policy by the state, which allowed people to be granted leave throughout the day in order for the purposes of voting. Thankfully, in this last budget season, that was amended and the first um, paragraph kind of says it all. It said employees who are registered board voters and have four consecutive hours either between the opening polls and the beginning of the work set, side of schedule or at the end of the work sessions to the closing polls. If they have four hours between that, we do not have to grant them a leave. So all of our employees are done all before four hours before the closing polls. Um, therefore, school districts no longer have to grant a leave for voter voting. Any questions to policy sixty five fifty? Sixty five sixty two, which is employment of a retired person. You'll see on the second page, there used to be a requirement that you could not make more than, if you're under a certain age, if you're over, I believe seventy, you can make as much as you want when you're retired. And I think when you're over sixty two and sixty five, the amount did not go up. What they did was they eliminated the thirty thousand dollar limit. So if you retired as a teacher or as an administrator, you can make up to thirty thousand dollars after retirement and it wouldn't affect your um, New York State retirement. They've changed it, that law to you can earn earnings under section two one two limit. So those limits change depending upon your age and sometimes year to year. So off the top of my head, I don't even know what they are for a retired person. And there is a waiver, section two twelve waiver um, that you can get. We haven't employed um, many retired teachers at this time. Student records, access and challenges. It's a six pager. It's been in our policy manual for a good long time and it's up for review and the only change I see is on the last page, which re, 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 moves the parent bill of rights section um, and the use of a third party contract. Section seventy five eleven, which is uh, immunization. Um, the change is in the middle. Whenever a child has been refused, refused admission to a continued attendance at a district for the lack of acceptable evidence of immunization, immunization or immunity or exemption, the principal of the school will notify the person in preparation, relation to the child his or her responsibility to have the child immunized and the public resources available to do so. Notify the local health authority, the name and address of the included, excluded child of the immunization. Um, and, and also what, what they lack and provide with the cooperation of local health authority for time and place in which the required immunization can take place. Currently, our local health department is not immunizing and their immunization center has closed. It is now a COVID testing center. So our parents have to go to um, their general practitioner or their pediatrician to get their shots. All of our students currently that are in school have already met that immunization requirement. There's been a waiver for any student that's been on the boat, there's been an extension. And we have a couple of those students that we're still waiting for them to get immunized. Policy seventy five twenty, which was the section added is the section on child abuse in a domestic setting. All of that section has been added to this policy. Definitions, um, what an administrator, a school administrator means or equivalent title, what, what our, what our responsibility is under uh, for mandated reporting, the responsibility of the staff members for mandated reporting. Not only mandating reporting, but filling out the child abuse and maltreatment forms. And then on page three of six, definition of a school district or a school, who needs to follow this policy and the duties upon receipt of an allegation of child abuse in an educational setting. Um, so it's always been anyone who holds a teaching or administrative license or certificate. You are a mandatory reporter. It has been extended as well as a licensed, a registered physical therapist, licensed, res- registered occupational therapist, speech and language pathologist, teacher aide, school resource officer. That a child is, anybody who reported to them must report that maltreatment, that child abuse. And then there is a whole section about what would happen if, if the written allegation was given to a bus driver employed by a school district. What has to happen to that oral report and then what they need to do for um, you know, they need to personally deliver to the superintendent employed by the school district. And then I make sure that that um, report or allegation is followed through. And it is reported to CPS and then we have a form that we have to file out, file and give to the state. Those are the changes to that policy. The rest are um, changes to the reading of it, doing some editing, things like that. There's a training requirement to um, that all licensed and registered people have to go through. That's on a, um, you have to get that before you get your permanent certification. You have to go through the training to make sure, so you know how and when and where to report child abuse and maltreatment. Last one. Last one for the whole year, got it all done at once, unless they send some new ones down the pipe. Um, eighty two forty one, um, patriotism, citizenship and human rights allegations. They added civic education values and our shared history of diversity, the role of religious tolerance in this country to our citizenship, patriotism and human rights education. Let me do a caveat that, that this is the last group for our audit. We did receive one for a huge change. We did receive one for a huge change to our Title IX complaints, which is harassment claims that our lawyers are looking at. And we're going through with a fine-tooth comb. It is a long policy, and I didn't want to A add it to this, and it's not ready to bring forward. That was sent to us by Policy Service. It is not a yearly change. This one was a change because under the current federal administration, there was a change to the Title IX complaints and how they have to be handled. So as soon as we have that set and ready to go, I'll bring it to the board, a board workshop. Those are the policies.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter, for giving that and letting discussion on policy. Under six, Transportation A, approved private parochial transportation request missed on Derek for children to go to different schools for the 2020-2021 school year. Transportation requests are granted based on a 15-mile transportation limit and available seating exists on the bus. Can I have a motion? So, second.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. For the kids that go to community schools in a zip code that may invest in being yellow when we are not, how would you put it all? Are we required to test those students?
Actually, there was a debate at our superintendent's meeting today. I will tell you what I was told by the Department of Health. They believe it is a requirement. But our insurance company, NYSER, has clearly said, "We're not testing anyone that's not coming to the school." So we'll have to see how that plays, how that plays out. Of the superintendents that are either in the yellow zone or are close to becoming yellow zone, it really didn't, one of them was going to share some testing material with the school. But it was clear from the other two superintendents that they had talked to NYSER, which is our insurance agent, and they have indicated that they are not comfortable nor are they going to allow us to test anyone that's not coming to our schools. So I think that answers it for me now. As we get closer, I would, I will take a look at it. I will take a look at that at the Department of Health, and more importantly, I'd contact NYSER. Nobody's indicated to me that that has happened yet for us. We have one school, I believe, within, in our zip code or in our district. I haven't been told if any of our students in yellow zones or red zones are being affected.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Trustee Stuart, do you have anything for us from those level?
Yes, it appears the legislative breakfast scheduled for Saturday, January 23rd, will be virtual. And more details will be forthcoming. An email has been sent to the district clerks, superintendents regarding major concerns they want presented to the legislatures, so we can put something together for the program.
Thank you. Superintendent Carter, do you have a report to see?
Just to wish board members, community members, and all of the staff Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the time with your families. I do have a Thanksgiving message that I put it together and I'll send out to the community and to our staff before the end of this month. Really enjoy the time with your family.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Board members, do you have anything further to add to this evening's discussion? I don't believe we have any members of the public here, so I'll add a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Thank you and have a great Thanksgiving.
You too, everyone.